And we're going to move on to announcements, presentations. Item A. September 9th, 2020 marks 10 years since the devastation in 2010 of the natural gas pipeline explosion in San Bruno's Crestmore neighborhood. In honor of the eight lives lost in this tragic event, we remember and honor their memory as the community continues to recover and demonstrates its resilience. As many folks know, with COVID, it certainly has changed everything. But also, we're not able to have any type of gathering up at the site to mark this unfortunate day tomorrow. But what we are doing, and the fire chief will be showing the community, is a virtual tour that tells of the history. What has been found is, over the years, when that park was developed, it was to really kind of keep things on moving forward, but it's been acknowledged that sometimes we need to know of the past to never forget and to acknowledge what has transpired and how this community and this neighborhood and the residents moved forward. After the fire chief is done, there are a couple informational items that I received as far as a couple of letters. I'll read one and I'll read a part of another, so we'll finish up with that. But at this time, if I could ask our fire chief to please go ahead and walk us through.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, area delay, your fire chief. I'm honored to be presenting tonight, but it's also with a heavy heart that I speak with you tonight in regards to our presentation. And the title of our presentation is 10 Years Later. And this title of the presentation is really to introduce a virtual exhibit to memorialize the 2010 gas pipeline explosion here in the city of San Bruno. And also provide you an introduction to the virtual tour, give you some basic overview of it, and make sure that we memorialize some of the events of that day and also make sure that we ensure that people that perished that day are not forgotten. And then provide an opportunity for some questions. All right, let's move along here. So 10 years later, this is a virtual exhibit. With COVID-19 happening, we thought it was important to memorialize the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion, but also in light of COVID-19, make sure that we provided a safe environment for the public and allow them also the opportunity to explore and do some research if they had it, or if someone was privy to the incident and was there that day, had the opportunity to reflect back on that day and those that were lost and the impact on our community here in San Bruno. This is a virtual exhibit. Again, it's a website with a coalescing of a bunch of story maps which are siloed to reflect a bunch of information that talks about the explosion itself, some of the aftermath of the explosion and recovery of the explosion as well. We wanted to begin by acknowledging that this virtual exhibit was printed by city staff and involved many of the departments within the city, including Public Works, City Net Services, our IT department, the city manager's office, the San Bruno Police Department, and the San Bruno Fire Department. The site will have an introduction by our mayor, Mayor Rico Medina. We also wanted to point out for this site, it's important to know that although the videos and pictures are not graphic, it has the opportunity to evoke some strong emotions in people, and we wanted to make sure that we recognize that and had a disclaimer so everybody would view it at their discretion and depending on their level of involvement in the event itself. The incident itself, we do a highlight of the incident itself. We talk about the eight lives that were lost that day, the 38 homes that were destroyed, and the other homes that were damaged. We provide a map so people have an understanding for people that didn't necessarily live in the neighborhood or maybe new to San Bruno could have an idea of some of the devastation that took place, so we again, don't forget. There's also a documentary that was done shortly after the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion called Trial by Fire. There's a video of the Trial by Fire documentary there, and also a gallery of photographs associated with the incident as well. As you move along in the virtual exhibit, there's a section that highlights the aftermath and how Crestmore Canyon really, the neighborhood has been changed, and the city honestly has been changed forever. We often think of the pipeline explosion and the public safety response to that event as what we kind of focus on, the lives that were lost also. But I want to also recognize the efforts of the response and recovery that was done, not only by the public safety people and folks of the city and the surrounding Bay Area, but also the city staff that really provided an invaluable service to the people that were affected by the pipeline explosion and also the families that perished. Many of our city staff provided, worked as liaisons to the family, and that's such an important component. We have the disaster portion of it, but the recovery honestly is a very important aspect of this event that we wanted to make sure we didn't leave unrecognized. The virtual exhibit also goes over the trials, a multitude of trials, including the NTSB, the federal trial, and the CPUC investigations associated with the gas pipeline explosion. And also highlights the fact that city staff provided assistance to outside legal teams and participated in that process for many years past the event itself, and that was an important component to make sure that the cities interested were protected and those citizens that we serve were protected, their interests moving forward. The next phase of the virtual tour is part of the rebuilding. We talked extensively about the rebuilding of the Crestmore neighborhood. The Crestmore neighborhood, for all intents and purposes, the infrastructure and many of the roadways and things were completely redone in the Crestmore neighborhood as part of that process of rebuilding. The development of the San Bruno Community Foundation, and you can delve in and explore throughout this virtual tour about the San Bruno Community Foundation and all the effects that that community foundation had on the community and the ability to be able to provide some recovery for the community and all the other, although this is a tragic event, those other positive things that the San Bruno Community Foundation was able to bring back to our community here in San Bruno. There's a highlight of the Earl Glenview Park and how that was developed, a combination of the top lot park that was there in the neighborhood and the donations of some of the lots that were affected from the explosion itself and how the Earl Glenview Park itself was created. And then the ability to create a new recreation aquatic center for the residents and visitors of the city of San Bruno. There's some really extensive information in regards to that. And then Crestmore Canyon. Crestmore Canyon, as we know, we've highlighted recently with the fire department's work, is a 76-acre open space area that we are doing quite a bit of extensive wildfire mitigation, and these are all, I would say, effects of the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion. For those that remember, PG&E was required to provide a significant amount of community volunteer hours to the city. Those volunteer hours were not all 100% completed, so the city negotiated a monetary settlement to be able to do a lot of this fire mitigation in Crestmore Canyon. So there's an extensive story map that was developed into the fire mitigation work that is being done in Crestmore Canyon. And just so everybody knows, the California Conservation Corps will be out tomorrow as their next second spike, Crestmore Canyon doing fire mitigation work tomorrow morning. The next component is a media archive where we have basically a content locker for citizens and visitors to the site to be able to view some videos from the day of the event, some of the recovery videos and some of the documentaries that were done. There's also an extensive photographic gallery of the event itself and many of the pictures that document some of the events that occurred. And then there's a very extensive newspaper gallery from various newspapers throughout the nation that documented some of the events that took place in regards to the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion. And that is a very extensive library that will be able to add to that content, you know, as things progress and we move forward. And the last and most important component of the gas pipeline explosion virtual exhibit is to make sure that we have remembrance of those and make sure that they're not forgotten. Levon Bullis, Greg Bullis, William Bullis, James Franco, Jacqueline Gray, Janessa Gray, Jessica Morales, and Elizabeth Torres. So for the council, I just wanted to say that I necessarily, as the fire chief wasn't working for the city of San Bruno back then, but I have a specific connection. I was there responding to that emergency, so I have a lot of those same feelings that many of you, although not nearly as strong as many that live in this community day to day, have and the staff that was working on this project throughout the years. But, you know, I can understand, I don't completely, you know, feel like I know the complete depth of the feelings, but I can completely understand some of those things. And in speaking with many of the staff and council members over the last few days, you know, it evokes those types of emotions. So I just say that we try and document this stuff with the best of intentions to make sure that we never forget those that were lost and make sure that we try to help prevent this from happening in any other community throughout the nation. But that, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Chief. And first and foremost, want to thank Jennifer, John Hampton, and yourself and all the staff that put this together. And I think it's nice that it was done in-house because truly the spirit and the respect that you all gave that are very much appreciated to what occurred and to those lives that were lost. You know, we did, I did receive some phone calls over the weekend, you know, from Congresswoman's office, Assemblyman, Jerry Hill's office. So Jerry Hill did, and for those of you who know, very much has stood by San Bruno, and he obviously is termed out this November, but it was important for him. So I have been asked if I would read it, and I'll try to do his comments justice. Dear Mayor Medina and honorable members of the San Bruno City Council, I write on this date to mark the 10th anniversary of September 9th, 2010, gas pipeline explosion that took eight lives, injured others, and destroyed or damaged dozens of homes. San Bruno suffered a terrible tragedy at that time. We memorialize those who lost their lives, we share the grief of bereaved, and we honor the San Bruno community for courage in the aftermath of the disaster. The city of San Bruno is exemplary in pursuing the true cause of the calamity and in seeking a just resolution, insisting on fairness over expensory, truth over profits, and demanding that the responsible parties must assume appropriate liability. It was because San Bruno demanded honest answers that meaningful reforms have been established so that no other community will have to suffer, as did San Bruno. The city of San Bruno is to be commended for the support that was provided to, from former Mayor Jim Ruane and former city manager Connie Jackson. The mayor and the city manager have the strength and the conviction of the city council and the entire community as they made the case to state and federal legislators, investigators, regulators, and in the courts. The state of California is more secure now with the laws enacted because of the San Bruno's insistence that public safety is a priority. It has been my honor to work with San Bruno to bring about new laws and safety regulations of public utilities. Something to be noted was, we did receive a letter, mayor and the council, from PG&E that obviously acknowledges what transpired, the regret of the pain and the suffering that was caused to this community and what we endured. But there are a few things that have transpired over 10 years, and I'll just list a few. Completing the safety work set forth in the Pipeline Safety Enhancement Plan developed in the wake of the San Bruno tragedy, installing more than 361 remote controlled and automatic shut-off valves on transmission pipelines. You remember, that's what caused the flames to last so long. Replacing nearly 300 miles of gas transmission pipeline and over 863 miles of gas distribution pipeline. Establishing essential world-class training and safety centers, including a state-of-the-art gas control center, which provides 24-hour monitoring of the gas system, the centralized gas safety academy training center in winters, and the Center for Gas Safety and Innovation in Dublin. Completing 11 of the 12 National Transportation Safety Board, NTSB, recommendations, work to be completed on the 12th, and the final safety recommendations, which include strengthening testing natural gas transformation lines, is ongoing. So as we look back, I will tell you, I've reached out and spoke to some of those family members who lost loved ones, who still wear the emotional or the physical scars and pain today. One thing that I will say, from the time we had our first year remembrance at Skyline College, which was phenomenal to see the community rise up, stand together. Also, what little knew was after that was concluded, the neighborhood got together. And on their own doing, Sue Bullis facilitated it, and they made a heart of candles in the center of the street, lighting them and coming together as one. This isn't best, but this is a picture of it that I still have today that was taken from above by a fire truck, and it was truly the neighborhood reflecting, as they do, honoring and remembering. But what I'm most proud of is the staff that did a lot of heavy lifting. And you had retired staff, staff that had moved on to other agencies who came back because we needed all hands on deck. There are people who speaking to this weekend that have survived and have moved forward to the best of their ability, and some of them, I had to say, you're a miracle because they've overcome the odds. And as a community, we did rally and we came together. So I want to thank the council of then, the council today, the staff of then, the staff today, and I want to just thank San Bruno for, this is truly, as was seen in the picture, a city with a heart. So with that, I once again want to thank Jennifer, because as you know, you don't like being in the center and you don't like taking any credit, but you were here then. And Mr. Hampton and both of you did phenomenal job on this, so thank you. And we do have a member, I'm seeing somebody from the public, and so, city clerk.
I'm Paul Wipinski. Hi, Paul, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I can't understand a word the mayor's saying, maybe he needs to reconnect, but like every word he says, it fades in and out. Maybe it's just me, but it's really hard to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. It could have been, I don't know if it's my connection, but it's also, I paused a few moments or anyway, it'd be my voice. Okay, I, oh, we have somebody else? City clerk, if you can bring them in?
Yes, Eisen, I'll let talk just one moment while I bring you in. Hi, Eisen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. Whenever you're ready.
Yes, I started it. Is it starting?
I'm sorry, what is, what's starting?
The timing for the clock?
Yes, you can, you can go ahead and start.
Yeah, I'm clicking on it and it, okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor Medina and fellow city council members. I am making this comment for the, regarding the aquatic center that has been in motion. I am feeling that that is a really awful idea for San Bruno because we have the aquatic center in South San Francisco, Burlingame, San Mateo. What would benefit San Bruno is if we had something different, instead of every single city having a swimming pool, aquatic center, and I think that we should, instead of having ice or water that we swim in, we should have a rink. And my idea is that we have a skating rink that would replace what we lost at Fashion Island in Foster City. We also need a replacement for Malibu Grand Prix so that we can have activities for families. And I think we could have someday something called the San Bruno Manatees, and it could be a hockey team, and they would have colors of purple, turquoise, and copper, and like the Mighty Ducks, instead of them, it would be the San Bruno Manatees, and one day they could maybe become San Jose Sharks. I think that we should think outside of the box, and if the attorney, the city attorney, would maybe make an amendment to the contract for this aquatic center contractor, perhaps they would be able to, instead of have a pool, we could have an ice rink where we would be able to have people from all over, not only San Mateo County, but across the Bay Area, coming to the city of San Bruno and giving business to our local restaurants because we already have enough aquatic pools. We could have something different where there's nothing, and there's no ice skating rink in all of San Mateo County, or batting cages, or the driving go-karts. And those were wonderful memories, and I miss that. And to be honest, I was even asking and trying to find out where is there a local batting cage? Perhaps that could be something that we can replace when we lost the one in Redwood City. So I really feel that the aquatic center is a bad idea, and if you just make it an ice rink, it would be way better for San Bruno. And I swear, I can visualize it all. It would be amazing to see our San Bruno kids skating around in these uniforms that I can just already picture. And instead of, you know, manatees being so peaceful and vegetarians, they would be fierce kids slapping pucks like the Mighty Ducks, but they're the up-and-coming manatees that become Navy Sharks someday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other speaker, city clerk?
I see no other hands raised.
Thank you. Just on that last comment, the community foundation did do a outreach campaign to the community that spent quite a bit of time discussing about something. And that settlement that the city obtained from PG&E, it was to bring something to the community that, as the former mayor would say, something good has to come out of this. But it also was by outreach, operated through the community foundation and others going around the community, getting feedback, getting surveys, and getting information that was brought back forward to then the city council, who by a 4-1 vote decided to move forward on the recreation and aquatic center. So I just wanted to verify that, but I do appreciate your comments. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item B. I know that's a hard transition from this to, but we're going to move on to item B. It is not too late to submit your count for the 2020 census. The deadline for the census is September 30th of this month, and it is very important that our San Bruno community is accurately counted. Visit my2020census.gov or you can call 844-330-2020 to be counted. Though as a reminder, we don't have a lot of time, but it is important that we all still do reach out and take care of that, please. Next, we have, we're going to be receiving an annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee, and I believe the chair.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Before we move on to that, on that last comment, do we know how San Bruno is doing with the census? I mean, is there, you know, no competition ever hurt anybody, right? To make sure our city is doing well. The last time I remember checking or being reported on, San Bruno didn't seem to be doing so well. So can we get a campaign, maybe everybody on social media just post, you know, a link to getting out there on the census and really pushing it, because it's an important thing?
Yes, one that happens every 10 years, and I think, yes, we should. Those that would wish and able to post would be great with that information because it's hard for everybody to write that down. Okay, let's go back to see the annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee, and I believe we have the chair, if they've been brought in.
Yes, I'm bringing, I'm bringing Malcolm Robinson into the room. I will note, there are two Malcolm Robinsons listed in the attendees, so I'm going to gamble and bring in one of them.
Well, if it's not the right one, this person's going to have a hard act to try to take care of this.
Mr. Robinson, I'm trying to unmute you. Okay, I'll try the other one.
Okay, it's unmuted?
Yes, there you are.
Mr. Chair, welcome. Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and city council for this opportunity to let you know what the Community Preparedness Committee has done the last year. It's going to be a very different presentation next year because this year is not quite the same. So this Zoom is a little different than the one we've been using, so I'm trying to share the presentation.
You should see a button at the bottom of your screen to share the screen.
Most of the time, it's rain color.
Okay, let's make it bigger. There we go, share screen?
Yes.
This one? Okay. We used to call this disabling technology because sometimes it doesn't work as advertised. Okay, there we go. Okay, this is year 2019. We had a full committee last year. There we go. The mission of the San Bruno Community Preparedness Committee, we are an all-volunteer group, and we're, you know, engaged in promoting emergency preparedness and planning and education to prepare residents to mitigate the potential consequences of natural and man-made disasters. Last year, George, a longtime member of the committee, was the chair. As the vice chair, Janet Lutis, Ron, who have been on the committee for a long time. Both are, I think, three out of four of us are ham radio operators. We lost Tricia Howard, she moved out of San Bruno, and we're looking for a replacement for her. Laura Davis was our city liaison. This year, I'm the chair and Janet's the vice chair, and we still have the open position, so please, if you're out there and you're interested in community preparedness, or you're a fireman or a policeman, and you have good advice and information and capabilities to share with the city of San Bruno, please raise your hand and volunteer. And Michael Salazar is our city liaison this year. There's a lot of people that come to these meetings. The fire chief, Dave Cresta, was there last year. Now we have area delay, a welcome addition. Gage has been with us a couple of years. Officer Sherry Campbell was a liaison with both Community Preparedness and Crime Prevention Committee, and now we have Scott Rogie, longtime San Bruno resident, is a welcome addition. Officer Sherry Campbell was a liaison with both Community Preparedness and Crime Prevention Committee, and now we have Scott Rogie, a longtime San Bruno resident. He's a welcome addition. Walt Long is the president of the San Bruno Ham Radio Club, and is well-known and highly regarded for his ham radio capabilities. Doug Coontz is volunteer with the Red Cross, and he's helping organize our fire alarm installation. And we get a lot of information from the Red Cross. When things go wrong, when people have to move out of their house, the Red Cross is there to help them, and it's a great addition to our, our community. Last year, we set up tables at many events. We were in the Posey Parade, Community Day in the Park, Police Day at the Shops. We missed that this year. The dog event is really a popular event. The Firehouse, Open House, Fire Station Open House 51 was a good event, highly populated. Put out the old fire truck, and it's for kids as well. The Fire Department was giving away helmets, bicycle helmets for kids. National August Nights Out, we missed visits from the mayor and the fire chiefs this year. That's where Neighborhood Watch groups have events around San Bruno, and the Police and Fire Department, and some people in the council come visit the different Neighborhood Watch events. We collaborated with the Crime Prevention Committee. We have some similarities, some, some cross purposes for us. So the Crime Prevention Committee and the Neighborhood Watch people will tell people about the CERT that the Fire Department puts on, and the work that we do, and vice versa. We'll have information about crime prevention and Neighborhood Watch, and, and we're going to share that information with the CERT training, during CERT training for those people. We participated in the EOC exercise. That's Emergency Operations Center in City Hall. The Radio Club monitor the radios, so there's a radio operation there, and we gathered information from different municipalities and emergency organizations and shared information. This year, we did a closing of the fire of the airport, and so we had to communicate a lot of movement of equipment and traffic issues. It was a good exercise down in the EOC. And we also promote San Mateo County Alerts, that you can get text messages about fire in your neighborhood, or closed streets, different things. And of course, the Red Smart, Red Cross Smoke Alarm Program. We use limited funds in our work. We're all unpaid volunteers. We get our materials from the Office of Emergency Services, which is run by the Sheriff's Department and FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association. And we showcase go-bags, so I have them behind me. I don't know if you can see it. That provides water, nutrition, and safety tools for four people for three days. And we bring our radios to show, you know, what people can do. And it's really kind of a show and tell for emergency preparedness. Here are some examples of what it looks like. Top left, we let people turn on and off the gas meter. Actually, PG&E says, "Don't turn it back on. Once you turn it off, you need PG&E to come back and turn it on." We hand out different information about being prepared. These are all the members of the committee last year. We participated in Kevin Mullins' Preparedness Festival at Tanforan. And this is at the Fire Station, the Open House. You can see a couple of go-bags there. We're signing people up for CERT training and giving out brochures on different elements of community preparedness. The Fire Department runs Community Emergency Response Training, and it's a great training. You learn how to put out a fire. You see evidence of people leveraging to extricate people. People get trained and get a bag of equipment. So you can see the helmet, the yellow blazer, so that's high visibility, so it can be seen, some tools to turn off gas, for example. And it's a really great training. It takes about, you know, one night a week for about five weeks, and then a Saturday afternoon, we actually practice the skills, and that's what you see going on there. It's a great training. I would urge everyone to take it. This is Walt Long, who's president of the San Bruno Radio Club. And one, thanks God, as you can see from Walt's shirt, things happen, and you no longer have a telephone, you no longer have cell service, but ham radios continue to work. And the Radio Club provides, we do a net every Monday evening where we practice using our radios. San Bruno is a hilly town, so on top of a hill, you can get great broadcasts, and a five-watt radio can cover a long distance. But if you're in a valley or behind a hillside, you don't have that capability. So we practice that, and we find where the dead spots are in town and where the spots are that work well. We collaborate with other radio clubs as well, and they've begun doing a radio session training during the CERT training the last couple of sessions. Our goals for 2020 will be hard to achieve because we haven't had meetings. We've had just one meeting recently. We're not setting up tables, dealing with the people, but we wanted to standardize event exhibits. So each time we bring out a table, we do something a little different. So we're working to standardize that. We're looking at having schools sign up for SMC alerts. We're trying to set up a competition between schools, but that's also been put on the back burner. The Red Cross work putting out, putting up smoke detectors in people's houses for free has been put on hold because of the COVID-19. PSAs we're going to do in, we're going to download FEMA PSAs and post on the website and have PSAs run on Channel 1. And lastly, to promote PulsePoint. PulsePoint is an app on your cellphone that you can find an AED. So if so, it's a defibrillator, basically. So when you have an emergency or someone has an emergency, you need to find the equipment quickly. That's the way to do it. And we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve you. This is Ron, and our volunteer fireman. And because we didn't get to set up a table, so this last slide I did today, so pardon the advertisement, but people should have a fire extinguisher rated A, B, or C. Keep dry vegetation away from your home. I've been doing that clear on my back hill. Have the go-bag with water, food, emergency supplies, stored energy. You know, there's a lot of ways to keep energy besides just having battery, because you need to keep your cellphone active and capable during times when PG&E shuts the power down. Keep your important documents in a safe place. Take pictures of your credit card and other valuables and put them on the, on the cloud for insurance purposes, and of course, get SMC alerts. So again, thank you for the time, and it's been an honor for me to be the Chair this year. I've enjoyed working with all these people. They're all capable people dedicated to helping people be prepared.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Ma'am. Councilmember Davis?
Uh, thank you so much. Hey, great presentation, Malcolm. It was a pleasure to be liaison on that committee. Such a group of dedicated residents that are really are passionate about community preparedness in San Bruno. A couple of things that you've mentioned, I think it's so important that everybody is registered in the San Mateo County Alert. It's a really awesome program that alerts you for any sort of incidents that you should be aware of, and especially during these crazy times with fires and whatnot. A great way to get notification. So thank you for that. And you know, the, the other thing I think is, you know, unless you're in a situation where you are having to evacuate with very little warning, you really can't think twice about it. But spending some time with some people in the last few weeks and just connecting with them, and people have lost homes or whatnot, you really think you're prepared, but you're not. So, you know, I just encourage everybody to sort of write their list. And the other good thing is, we all have iPhones, and just videotape everything in your home, and that'll really help pick an inventory of what you have. But it's amazing, when you got to go through that process, how difficult it is. So thank you for the excellent presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason?
Hi, thanks for that presentation. I just wanted to ask, you mentioned the, the go-bag, and I didn't know if I misheard. Did you say that the go-bags are actually available for residents?
They're available to buy. So there's a company in Redwood City, it's run by a family, it's called Ready America. I don't know if you can see this. It's an example of them. Different companies sell them. PG&E offers them. There's an advertisement where they urge you to get them. I have one I put together with myself. I was once in the Army, and so I have a medical supply bag to deal with different situations. I take long-distance trips, and I just like to be prepared. You know, people can grab, grab any backpack and put in supplies that they'll think they'll need. Medications for your kids, your, your pets, things like that, water. Just keep it near the door or in your car or something.
Great, thank you. And then I had one other question. You mentioned AEDs, and I think it's, what is it? Within three or four minutes of cardiac arrest, I think it's something like 60% chance of survival? And I just remember from a CPR class, it's something like 10%. You lose another 10% of your chance of living for every minute that you don't have that defibrillator. So my question is, have, are there any programs out there where individuals who, you know, may be at high risk of cardiac arrest could actually, you know, take an AED on loan, or check it out, almost like the library checks out laptops? I, I know they run between $2,000 and $3,000, if I remember correctly, and, and I'm just curious if that's even out there, and not just in San Bruno, but any city, because it really is the difference between life and death.
Well, I, I really don't know the answer. I could search, maybe Gage or Ari would know? No. I don't have an answer for that, but I'll look into it and get back to you.
Through the Chair, I was just going to say that medical technology has become very vast and ever-evolving, that those with heart conditions actually can have a defibrillator sort of inserted. So if you know you have an issue, they medically insert that to actually kick, kick off if you have an episode. So what happens, it's those, those residents who don't have other line issues that all of a sudden they're having a heart attack, and they never had any experience of it, which is typically what, what the need is. But it's, it's an expensive piece of equipment, and so I think one of the last ones we had installed was at the rec center, when a gentleman that was coaching basketball dropped, and they got one installed there pretty quickly. So it's really great to have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative.
Thank you.
In my understanding, unless, I could be corrected, that every municipal facility in the city of San Bruno does have one? Any other, thank you. Any other questions, Council?
Okay.
Okay. Malcolm, once again, thank you to you and the committee, and that is one thing that is, is true, the passion by this group, and we wish the whole community had that preparation and passion, because as we see, things do happen. Sometimes it is at a moment's notice when you do have to flee and try to take care of yourself or your neighborhood. So thank you again for everything, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I'll move on to item D, and we're going to turn that over to the City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for an announcement for our committees, boards, and commissions. In October of every year, we have vacancies and expired terms that come on all of our boards, committees, and commissions. And I have a very brief PowerPoint just to go over this for the public. It gets important to share so that if there's anybody out there who is interested in, in applying to serve, they can do so. So as I said previously, in October of every year, half of the city's current commission, boards, and committee members' terms expire, and a recruitment process to fill those seats occurs. In October of 2020, at the end of October, there will be 25 terms that will be expiring. Members whose terms are expiring, and if they would like to be reconsidered for a reappointment, they would need to reapply and be re-interviewed with the city council with other qualified applicants. Members of the public who are interested in serving are encouraged to apply for, apply for consideration for appointment to their preferred commission, board, or committee. And the, that can, that can happen by contacting the City Clerk's office. So we have applications online. The link is here below. I know that it's hard to get that, you know, of course, when you're watching a Zoom meeting, to try to jot down a long hyperlink. But if you go to the city's website, under the Boards, Commissions, and Committees, it's one of the first items you see when you go to that webpage. It's an application for our Boards, Committees, and Commissions. And there's a rating process, and a member of the public can rate which board, which body they would like to serve on, and they can choose their top two preferences, and then that helps us narrow it down, which ones they are most interested in serving on. And they can submit their completed applications to myself or the Deputy City Clerk, Vicky Hashay. Our email addresses are listed here. They can also call our main line, 650-616-7061, if they have any questions. And this will be broadcast on Channel 1 on a continual loop on Nextdoor, and we will share it to our social media sites to try to garner as much interest as possible. And we will also be reaching out to the current members serving so that if any of them have an interest to reapply, they may do so, and they're also made aware that their term is expiring. And we've already started that process, and we do have several applications on file that we've collected through the year, through the years. Applications are kept on file for two years, and we notify the application, the applicants when a seat has become vacant. We let them know by phone calls and emails to see if they are still interested. So let's say somebody filled out an application last year for Parks and Rec Commission. We want to make sure that they are still interested in serving before we just dump them in a pile for an interview with the council. And usually, people are very interested to serve. We've had a lot of luck with getting applications for some of these. And so we will be reaching out soon with council to set up some interviews and with members of the public who have applied. And we will be keeping council abreast of the applications as they arrive, so that you all are all aware of the outreach that's been happening and the interest that's garnered. We do have a neat little flyer that will be published on Channel 1 and social media, just to kind of promote for people to get involved, to volunteer their time if they have the time. It's a great way to stay involved with their community and to serve their communities, and to stay abreast of what's going on by serving on one of these bodies. If you have any questions?
Okay, now seeing any hands? We'll go ahead. Before we move on to IME, I've been asked if I can, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Councilmember Mason?
Just a quick question. I know with Measure G, we had opening and closing dates for the, as of now, is Measure G along with all the other committees and commissions, just year-round, anybody can submit their interest?
Yes, we do take applications year-round for all of our bodies, all of the bodies that we have. For this case, we do ask for a cutoff date, just so that we can kind of get an interview date in mind. But if we were to receive something after that date, especially if the interviews haven't occurred yet, then we will see if we can lump them in with the interviews that's going to happen. Because of course, council doesn't know who's going to be interviewed until the meeting date occurs, because we want to keep it as neutral as possible for you. And, but yeah, we will definitely accept applications. But we do have a cutoff, a tentative cutoff for October 2nd. That's more for administrative purposes so that we can kind of gather an interview date with the applicants and the council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Um, one additional question. So throughout the year, is there sort of a regular routine where we can actually interview applicants that, in order to fill vacancies? Like, I know that there's some committees already have vacancies. They have for several months. So how do we get these filled on more of a regular basis?
Yes, we normally do have a process where we post a notice of vacancy. We gather applications, and then we hold interviews. Of course, with COVID, that kind of threw us all for a loop, and we had to put that on the back burner because we had to focus on getting every, all of our boards and commissions up and running on Zoom, as well as our city council and the Community Foundation. And of course, as you know, with having a lot of special meetings in June, the council didn't have the time to focus on interview sessions for all of the vacancies that we had. Luckily for us, there were no quorum issues. If there was any quorum issues, I would have urged council to really put that first and make sure that that body is filled as soon as, that vacancy is filled as soon as possible. We will be doing interviews for some of those vacancies that we currently have. We have four vacancies. And so we will be setting up interviews for those in the near future, within probably before the end of Octo, I'm sorry, September, so that we can get those filled now that our body is filled. our bodies are meeting again virtually, just so we can get those vacancies filled and then we can focus on the expert expiring of terms that's coming up. Thank you.
Okay, see no other questions? I've been asked before we again go on to item E, if the city manager would like a moment.
Hi, members of the city council. I'm just sharing the screen to show two more pieces of information related to two of our informational items. So we actually didn't click to our very
Jimon, we're not good. We we lost you for a moment.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, technical glitch. I just want to make a quick announcement about two items under an under our announcement section. One is we did not go to the very last slide in our PowerPoint presentation with regard to remembering the gas pipeline explosion. That's now up on the screen. And so we want to let the community know that with the sort of with the support from the San Bruno Community Foundation, the city was able to purchase and install a outdoor kiosk for people to experience our virtual exhibit within the Earl's Lynn View Park. And so that temporary exhibit will be active tomorrow morning beginning at 9:00 AM. And it will be there through the month of September. Also, you can access the virtual exhibit online on a computer or your mobile device. And the website is on the screen. It's www.sanbruno.ca.gov/tenyearslater. And you can put the number 10 or you can spell 10 years 10, either way it works. But we wanted to point that out to the community and let the community know that that's where you can access the virtual exhibit. The very last thing and sort of in the magic of time, council member Laura Davis asked a question about the census. And so we were able to pull up that information and quickly display it on the screen. And so what you have there are where we stand, this is information you can find on the county's website, but through September 7th, 2020, you have where we stand compared to all of the cities in San Mateo County. And and actually, what you see there are 24 jurisdictions. As we all know, there are 20 cities within the county, but the unincorporated county areas are broken up into four additional areas. And so in this portrait, we stand 12 out of 24 with 76%, 76.6% of our population having completed the census. The number one successor is San Carlos with 84.9. And so our marker should be 86. Overall, we're just above the county average. However, not shown on the screen, we are above the statewide average as of September 7th, which is 67% and the overall national average is 68%. So an answer to council member Davis's question about where do we stand? And we are actually doing better than where we were last year this time.
Thank you so much, Javon.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to item E, receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. Jennifer.
Thank you. We're just pulling up the presentation right now. Okay, thank you, Javon. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Diano, Assistant to the City Manager. And I'm here again this evening representing our emergency operations center public information team to provide our regular update on COVID-19. My agendas for this evening includes an update on COVID-19 statistics. The most notable recent change with with our current status is the state's new blueprint for a safer economy. Local outdoor regulations that were recently implemented by the city and available for businesses affected by the mandated closure of indoor operations. I'll review a few important resources, including a tenants and property owner portal available through the state and will be available for any questions. This screen is probably familiar to you as I've used it before. We're pulling our local statistics for the county of San Mateo and from the health department specifically. In San Bruno, the county reports that there are 379 positive cases in San Bruno, which is an increase from 338 cases as reported to you last on August 25th. County Y, there are a total of 8,750 positive cases and a total of 136 deaths. These dashboard statistics, others, in addition to others such as hospital data, lab testing data and long-term care facility data are all available on the county health website and that's smchhealth.org. We remain aligned with the state in our recovery effort and I will go over what is what's new and what's happened over the last two weeks. On Friday, August 28th, Governor Newsom announced the state of California's new blueprint for a safer economy. Blueprint for a safer economy replaces the former term of the state's monitoring list and really is a guide the state developed allowing modified operations to certain businesses that are restricted from indoor operations. Every county in California is assigned to a tier based on new cases per day and positivity rates. You can see on from the tiers on the screen that the highest risk level, which is where the county of San Mateo currently is assigned as of today, is the color purple entitled widespread. In this category, many nonessential indoor business operations are closed. Next is the color red entitled substantial. In this category, only some indoor business operations are closed, followed by the color orange as moderate, allowing some indoor business operations with modifications. And lastly, yellow labeled as minimal with most indoor business operations allowed to open with modifications. Each tier has case by day and positive test criteria. At a minimum, counties must remain in a tier for at least three weeks before moving forward. Data is reviewed weekly and tiers are updated on Tuesdays according to the state's website. To move forward, a county must meet the next tier's criteria for two consecutive weeks. If a county metrics worsen for two consecutive weeks, it will be reassigned to a more restrictive tier. I'll note the widespread tier since we're in that category. A county classified as widespread has more than seven new cases daily per 100,000 population and more than 8% as a positive test rate. In this category, many nonessential indoor business operations are closed, but what's different is available on the state's website. Businesses can go to the state's website, www.covid19.ca.gov and pull up information on what's allowed by state and then county by county. The tier categorized as widespread, some businesses that could not operate indoors can now be open at 25% capacity, such as indoor shopping malls, hair salons and libraries. Some businesses that were closed for indoor operations and remained unable to operate indoors but are allowed to operate outdoors, that is only if local rules are allowing that. And I'll provide more information on that in the next slide or two. And examples of this type of business, nail salon or card rooms. And then lastly, some businesses that were closed are businesses that remain closed at this time, and that includes bars and indoor theaters. Our city EOC team was simultaneously working to develop new outdoor regulations to support the state's effort by also developing a way for businesses to include a portion of their activities outdoors and proper social distancing and safety protocols in place. For example, this program allows putting a table or chairs outside adjacent to a business, includes temporary use of private property and city-owned property. The city will waive encroachment fees for outdoor businesses on public property affected by these mandated closures. Use of private owned property for enhanced outdoor business can temporarily be implemented with the submission of an application to the city and as long as all other requirements of the program are abided by and have property owner permission. This is all similar to the previously established outdoor dining program. The new temporary regulations were developed to support our business community, including dining, which was already existing, card rooms, personal care services, gyms, non-critical businesses, for example, offices and places of worship. This expanded temporary outdoor business program is available only while the city of San Bruno's determination of a local emergency is in effect. And for any business owner that has a question on private property, they can direct their question to our building department. That phone number is that 650-616-7074. And public property would go through our public works department and that would be pulling an encroachment permit. That number is 650-616-7065 or an application is available online. Supporting our local business community is more important now than ever. How can you help our community by supporting our businesses? There are a couple of ways that you can do so. Ordering takeout from your favorite San Bruno restaurant, ordering goods for curbside pickup, calling your favorite place of business to see if they have modified operations that are available and checking to see if services are available online. Many of our local businesses, as we know, have now adjusted their operations during the pandemic and have really developed innovative ways to continue to provide services to our community in a healthier, in a healthy manner. And so I encourage everyone to stay in touch with their favorite businesses in our town. With the state regulations, county regulations and local regulations, sometimes things get a bit confusing. I wanted to take a moment to just quickly review the difference that we have here. You can see on the screen. I recently received a telephone call from a Napa County resident asking why their regulations are different from the city of San Bruno. And while we're aligned with the state, we do have a few county orders that remain in effect. And you may ask yourself what they are since there's so much information in the public arena. But what we have in place is is fairly straightforward. I think most of us are used to it and have accommodated our schedules, but just as a reminder, face coverings are required. There are specified exceptions. But when in public, face coverings are required. Social distancing requirements, all individuals must adhere to social distancing and the county health order. And that includes maintaining six feet of space for social distancing from individuals who are not part of the same household. Washing hands for at least 20 seconds and using hand sanitizers as recognized by the CDC. Covering coughs and sneezes in a tissue or fabric or in your elbow or sleeve. Try not to use your hands. Avoid social interaction outside of the household when you're sick or having symptoms that appear to be related or even suspected to be related to COVID-19. Social distancing protocols and health safety plans are required for all businesses and you may notice they're posted in the windows of many of our local businesses. Those are required by the county. No mass gatherings, gatherings of over 50 people are prohibited unless a larger gathering is specified and allowed by the state. And other health orders are available regarding quarantine and isolation. They're all on the county's website and that's at smchgov.org and they all remain in effect. Each update, I've provided you information on resources of high interest. And tonight there are a few important ones for families that are struggling financially with rent and families who are adapting to distance learning programs and have children at home. But first I'm going to start with COVID-19 testing. Additional testing dates have been announced by the county to be held in San Bruno. The testing will be conducted at 9:07:50. This is the same location that has generously hosted the testing sites over the last few months. The dates are Wednesday, September 23rd and Wednesday, September 30th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Registration is required and fills up quickly, so please visit projectbaseline.com/covid19. You can sign up there for the San Bruno site or consider other sites that are within our county if registration is limited. More information on the testing site is available through the county. And also as a reminder, you may want to contact your primary care physician because they may offer testing and have a more expedited process in getting the results back to you. Next is new relief for renters and homeowners. There was legislation that took effect August 31st and that protects many Californians who are unable to pay their rent or mortgage because of COVID-19 impacts. The state has developed a portal to provide an interactive tool to help tenants, landlords, homeowners to know what rights and options there are under the Tenant, Homeowner and Small Landlord Relief and Stabilization Act of 2020. On the portal, guidelines, forms and resources are all available. Tenants can really learn how they may be able to prevent eviction and pay rent on manageable terms. Likewise, landlords can learn about support that they can provide and get guidelines on working with their tenants. And there's two minutes to answer questions below to or in the link below to get a tailored report that can be used. More information is the the link is listed there as a source, but it's covid19.ca.gov. Unfortunately, given COVID-19 and the wildfires alike, there are many bad prey on others, unfortunately. It's important to be aware not to be taken advantage of by avoiding COVID-19 scams. These tips are good to keep in mind, you know, during COVID and outside of COVID. Never provide personal identifying information to anyone who calls you. Never provide prepaid payment card information over the phone. When in doubt, just hang up and don't open suspicious emails or click on any links. Our police chief, excuse me, police chief produced a short PSA earlier this year. It's available on our website and provides a helpful reminder to stay alert and be aware of scams at this time and at any time. And while more people are at home with their children and working on adapting to distance learning, I wanted to remind families that our San Bruno Public Library has many online services and virtual experiences available to assist. One great example of our service modifications include Live Storytime. Shortly after our library was closed, our library team developed a live Storytime series that children can watch from home. This is a great way to continue to encourage literacy and engagement while occupying children's time. Storytime is streamed live on YouTube every Tuesday and Thursday at 11:15. And recordings are also available at storytime.sanbrunolibrary.org. And that is linked in the presentation for those that would like to connect directly. Our library also offers curbside pickup for material reservations. You can partake in this convenient service by reserving your material and scheduling an appointment for pickup. When you arrive for your appointment, you simply call the library and one of the friendly staff members will walk out to your vehicle and deliver your order to you. It's really that simple, honestly. And so you can contact our library by going to the link on the website or you can call to get more information. And that phone number is 650-616-7078. We also have a virtual recreation center for the fun part of schooling. It was created for summertime. However, there are many resources for families that need something to do remotely. And the virtual center is split up into multiple categories. It's a wide array of online options. So this resource does not apply to one particular age group or youth or or our more mature portion of the community. And so there's plenty for all ages and that includes arts and crafts, coding and engineering, cooking and nutrition, dance, fitness, learning resources and science. And lastly, I wanted to take a moment to encourage those who have not already filled out their census to do so while they're at home. The census is important to make sure San Bruno receives federal funding for public services, parks, schools and and many more services provided through the county. Census workers are out knocking on doors now and they all have proper PPE and are practicing social distancing. And so they're going to be outreach to properties that have not yet submitted their account. As discussed earlier by the mayor and the city manager, responses are due by September 30th. And you can submit your account by visiting my2020census.gov or by calling 844-330-2020. And like I've said before, please stay connected. If you're not already signed up for our city accounts on Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram and Twitter, please do so. We also put all of this information on our local channel and on our website. For those that are not on social media, the information is available. And so please on social media, the information is available, and so please explore. There's a lot of information available to you. That concludes my presentation for this evening. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you very much, Jennifer, and to everyone for all that information. We still have to be very careful. I had a question regarding enforcement. So I've had a few residents contact me, and if there is a business out there that is kind of doing things in an interesting way, who should a resident call?
Javon Brogan, city manager. Councilmember Medina, the best person for a resident, or any person frankly, to call would be our police department non-emergency line. There are new powers that we have that the county adopted to fine businesses for inappropriate practices and not abiding with the county health officer's order. We routinely receive emails and calls into the non-emergency number for matters like this. And I know firsthand that the police department has done an excellent job triaging them, but then also going out and making direct contact with the business and attaining compliance for everyone's safety.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That's (616) 7100.
Yes.
Councilmember Mason.
Thanks for that presentation, Jennifer. I just wanted to add for the members of the public who are listening that Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill 3088 last week, and it just states that tenants who pay at least 25% of their new rent from September 1st through January 31st, 2021, will be protected from eviction. Those who fail to meet the minimum rent payment could be removed beginning February 1st, 2021. It also provides a reprieve for tenants who have not paid the rent between March and August, and allows a landlord to sue for that back rent beginning in March of 2021. These are related specifically to COVID hardships, and that there has to be a declaration from the tenant. But there has been a lot of questions, I know, to me, from renters who are having a really hard time. And I think that this assembly bill is really important to share, because it's going to protect our really most disenfranchised communities. That was it. Thank you. Thanks, Jennifer, for that update.
Okay, seeing nothing more, Jennifer. Once again, thank you for all the information and the detail.